Good afternoon, everybody. It's slightly after 3:00 p.m., and I'd like to call the Special Kane County Board Meeting of May 4, 2021, to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Allen?
Allen, present.
Bates?
Bates, present.
Berman?
Berman here.
Brown?
Brown here.
Davis?
Ford?
Ford here.
Fraz?
Here.
Gums?
Gums is here.
Igbal? Kenyon?
Here.
Kiyas?
Kiyas, present.
Kope?
Kope here.
Leonard?
Leonard here.
Lewis?
Lewis here.
Martin?
Martin here.
Molina?
Molina, present.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Shepro?
Shepro, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Surges?
Surges, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe here.
Weber? Oh, he's on. Waniki?
Waniki, present.
I'm in a meeting.
And Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Very good, thank you. Before we begin our Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to introduce Lynn Elberg. She has been an administrative officer from Animal Control, and she's going to be leading us with the pledge. But a little bit about Lynn before we begin. She has been with Kane County for 47 years, which is absolutely commendable. She's helped to plan and aided in the moving of the Animal Control facility from Building A to Building H, and eventually to where the Animal Control facility is now in Geneva, or St. Charles.
Geneva.
Geneva, okay, that's right. No, that across the street is Geneva. And Lynn, I had an opportunity just to speak briefly with her upstairs. The chairman's office was once the Office of Animal Control. So she's in, and all the other offices, administrative offices, are on the other side. Lynn mentioned that she was very afraid of cats when she started with the Animal Control, but has overcome that fear and is now friends with Precious, the county house cat, and now has a cat of her own, Slippers, who arrived at Animal Control with a fish hook stuck in her mouth. Poor thing. Now she and Lynn, she and Slippers are soulmates. Lynn wears many hats at Animal Control, including managing, staff, HR, billing, purchasing, veterinarian distribution, and is always friendly and helpful with everyone here at the county and those people who know her. She is going to be retiring after, again, 47 years on Friday, so I think this is very appropriate for her to send off our 10-year reapportionment and remapping with her Pledge of Allegiance. So please, Lynn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Lynn, the very best of luck to you.
Thank you all.
And thank you so much for coming. Now, may I please have the approval of the minutes of April 21, 2021, Special County Board Meeting? May I have a motion?
Fraz.
Fraz. And Mr. Kenyon, seconds. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Shepro. Excuse me, Mr. Shepro.
Yes.
Are there any thoughts, comments, or changes to the minutes?
That directly on the minutes, but I have been told by many people in the press and outside, and I'm probably one of the bigger offenders, is that we don't identify ourselves when we speak, and if they're listening, it's hard to tell who's speaking. So as I say, I freely admit to being one of the major culprits on that, but just a reminder as a courtesy to our audience, when there are many voices, it's hard to discern them, so.
Thank you for that.
And I am Ken Shepro.
If there are no changes or edits, all in favor approving the minutes, say aye, please.
Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call. My apologies, roll call.
Everything.
Okay. Allen?
Allen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, aye.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Davis, did you arrive? Ford?
Yes.
Fraz?
Yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Igbal, did you arrive? Kenyon?
Kenyon, yes.
Kiyas?
Kiyas, yes.
Kope?
Kope, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Shepro?
Shepro, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Surges?
Surges, yes.
Tepe?
Yes.
Waniki?
Waniki, yes.
That passes. Thank you. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any online? Seeing that there are none online, we'll move to the next agenda item. The presentation's discussion of our ordinance determining the size and method of our election of county board. The task force, let me just get my notes. The task force was last Thursday and ruled by a vote of, with two dissent, approval of moving the reapportionment to 24 members. Thoughts were considered that they wanted representation of agriculture, both rural and urban districts. There's also thoughts of diversity of perspectives. There's also consideration that the larger the district, the higher the expense of running would be for a candidate. Issues that were addressed during that meeting were support of transportation, climate change and land waste, extra demand for electricity, and managing unincorporated developments. They're also concerned about--
They're also concerned--
Get some feedback. They were concerned about the growth and the significance of the population changes. There was also this conversation about the function of committees versus the Forest Preserve District. They also wanted to manage the divergent work, life and work experience of a larger board, and they were also concerned, once again, about having a larger district would increase the need for additional monies in politics. So that was brought up several times. On the other side of having it become a smaller board was a conversation about efficiency, governmental efficiency. And it was decided then after conversation that as long as pending your approval, if the board remains at 24, that government maintains its sense of strong efficiency, both in cost and in work. They also recommended that you maintained a single district rather than a multi-member district. And they were also wanting to make sure that the constituents' voices were heard and that the board was not overworked by having a larger district because of that. So those were the concerns. So Ordinance 21, and I don't have the final number on it yet. Has that final number been determined? 21-230.
I'm sorry, what is that number?
21-230.
Determining the size and method of election of the county board members to be elected
as part of the county's reapportionment plan following the 2020 federal census. May I have a motion?
Move, approve.
Your name, please.
Berman.
Thank you.
Leonard, seconds.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I believe that the vote on the task force was one dissenting vote, and one advisory member also indicated that he did not favor keeping it at 24. He wanted to reduce it.
That is correct. That is correct. Two dissents, the rest in favor. Yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to support--
Name, please.
Drew Fraz. I'm happy to support the decision of the task force, but I was the dissenting vote along with Mayor Walters of Elburn. It was the dissenting advisory vote, and it just had to do with the fact that 10 years ago, I was here when we reduced the board from 26 to 24, and the thinking at that time was that every 10 years, the county board would have the option to reduce it by two, which would put us down in that range of 18 by the time we reached the 800,000 population that would require an 18-member board and would make it easier if we did it a little bit at a time. And I do think that we can easily accommodate the county with a 22-board member, so I'll be voting in that direction today.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
My Kenyon, I don't look at these all as numbers. I look at it as people, experiences. Each one of us brings our life experiences. You, many years, me, many years, and our experiences come together, and we've worked to try and make this county work the best we can. Now, numbers, you can cut it down. You could have two board members, but you should only have two life experiences. And I just, other boards I've sat on, I know managers think they'd rather have less board members because it's easier to control. And you know, 24 cats running in a different direction, we're pretty hard to control. But I do really believe, I like the experiences everybody brings, and I get to meet people from another part of the county. It's pretty big sometimes, and it works for the advantage of the overall good for the county. That's why I would like 24.
All right, yes.
John Martin, I think it's important to remember, as we evaluate this resolution, that the governance of the board's procedures really have the bulk of the work done by committees. So we don't have 24 people sitting around a table trying to decide what's going on. Everything, virtually everything that comes before the full board, except in an emergency context, has been vetted by a committee with a full chance for people to participate, and those committees are comprised of six or seven people, and I believe very efficient, and certainly not the 24 of us all, as Mr. Kenyon said, being a herd of cats in the same room on a raw issue.
Thank you. Yes, 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 sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
May I, please?
I think that what impressed me the most about the discussion at the task force was the comments from so many of the advisory members of the commission, of the force, many of whom have divergent views on many subjects, and yet they were all, I think, exceptionally eloquent and unanimous, except for Mr. Walter, in agreeing that the sacrifice of diversity, of representation, of different points of view, different walks of life, different life experiences was critical. And I wish every member of this board could have heard that discussion, and I wholeheartedly support the decision of the task force and the advice of our advisory members.
And I would concur with that. Opinions were well presented and thoughtfully presented. Are there any other comments? And those participants who are online? Hearing none, please call the roll. Okay, for 21-230, Allen?
Allen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, aye.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Fraz?
Fraz, no.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Kenyon?
Kenyon, yes.
Kiyas?
Kiyas, yes.
Kope?
Kope, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina? Molina? Okay. Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Shepro?
Shepro, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Surges?
Surges, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Waniki?
Waniki, yes.
That passes. The motion passes. Thank you. And now, we're going to be moving to a discussion regarding the use of the American Community Survey data for the reapportionment, and I'd like to invite our, do we have a representative from the state's attorney? Who would like to speak to that?
And Madam Chair, if I can just first do a small introduction. This is Jamie Moser, the state's attorney. When we were discussing what to do to the beginning of reapportionment and redistricting, part of what we were looking at is how this process was going to go from the legal perspective. When I took office, I had a conversation with many of you, and there was a lot of discussion about the cases that the Civil Division handles versus having a special assistant state's attorney appointed, and what was the decision-making behind that. I am very lucky that in this office, I have eight brilliant civil attorneys, but those eight brilliant civil attorneys are pulled into many different directions. And as you have seen, for those who have been on this board for a long time versus those who have just joined the board, it ranges from local civil litigation, federal litigation, to land acquisitions, to taxing issues, to issues with mental health cases. There's a whole variety of what they have to deal with. Part of what we want to make sure to do, as the state's attorney's office, is give you the best possible representation. Because this particular issue obviously comes up every 10 years, it's not really something that we can have one person who has that specialty in it. So when we were thinking about this process and discussing amongst ourselves, that's when we decided to reach out to see if we can find somebody who did have a specialty in this. Because this is going to be a difficult process. This is going to be an emotional process because we're going to be talking about many different issues that involve the redistricting and reapportionment. And what we wanted to do was to make sure that we got the best possible representation for this board, and that's when we found Phil Lutka Hans. And he is going to hopefully impress you in the way that he impressed us when we first met with him. He has been doing cases like this or helping with counties and municipalities for a very long time. Not only has he talked about it in the practical sense of it, he's also engaged in litigation regarding it. And that's something that we have to be especially conscientious of at this time because we are in this particular situation where the pandemic has prevented the census from being done in a timely matter, and frankly, there's going to be a lot of arguments about the census itself. So I'm very pleased to introduce a person who has made redistricting sound simple and easy to me in a way that I don't actually believe it is. And so he is here to answer all of your questions and to discuss all the possibilities for the future. And so I just wanted to come in and talk about why, instead of the Civil Division undertaking this, we've decided to ask Mr. Lutka Hans to join us in this process because it is our intention to make this a fair and easy process where everyone is represented throughout this. So before I turn it over to him, if there's any questions for me, I will have to bow out discreetly to go to the Aurora Police Department. No charges for me, I'm just providing training.
Are there any questions for State's Attorney Moser?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the kind introduction, State's Attorney Moser. Yes, my name is Phil Lutka Hans. I've been doing this now for close to probably over 30 years. I've been doing redistricting at both the county, municipal, and state level, both representing clients like yourselves, litigation for and against counties, litigation at the state level, and with that comes litigation on the federal courts, obviously. So we have a power presentation for you today. Blair, if you don't mind starting it, because I don't know how.
No, we don't see anything.
We don't see one yet, sir. That's it. Thank you very much. So, real quick, I know many of you have, if not all of you, have, Assistant State's Attorney Neearman has gone through a lot of the guidelines, statutory guidelines, et cetera, as it relates to redistricting, and I won't bore you with them too much again. I'll try and be fairly quick on some of the stuff I know at least the task force has heard a number of times. Statutory guidelines. In essence, we have four in the statute, equal in population, contiguous and compact, divide townships or municipalities only when necessary to conform to population requirements, and try not to divide precincts. That's really it in a nutshell. I will tell you, dividing, not dividing precincts, given what you have as far as population numbers in precincts already is going to be next to impossible because you have precincts that are too large already, and the state and the congressional map will divide your precincts already, as will the municipal maps going forward. So while the statute's written this way, it is not something I would take as a huge preference going forward. The one that's really huge is the population issue, and it's the one we're going to talk about. As you see on there, population means the number of inhabitants as determined by the last preceding federal decennial census. Until 2011, the courts had held that that, there was no such thing as substantially equal in population for the county. The courts had actually held that zero deviation was required, so plus or minus one person. What does substantially equal in population mean for you? In essence, the 14th Amendment's equal protection clause requires that state legislative districts be drawn with substantially equal population, one person, one vote, in essence. They have given up to, they have allowed historically, most deviations of 10% or less are acceptable. You'll often hear plus or minus 5%. It's shorthand because that's what people, it's shorthand, but the reality of it is you could have deviation of your largest district being 8% over and your smallest district being 2% over. That's really the deviation that's at issue here. So if you had a district of 100 people, for example, you could have a district of 107 as being your largest and your smallest being 98. That keeps you under the 10%. Not, 10% is not always, it's a, it's not always a safe harbor. It is, however, a presumptive safe harbor. The court in Georgia, the one side up there, Larrios, in that case, they were under 10%, but what they had done is they, for example, had made all the Republican districts, and I don't remember if it was Republican or Democrat, I apologize, but all the Republican districts, plus 4%, and all the Democrat districts, minus 4%. So in essence, pack the Republicans, or it was pack the Democrats, I don't, it doesn't really matter. But they took one party, the party in power said, "We're going to put those in the minority, we're going to make those districts, we're going to give them to them, and we're going to utilize their people so they cannot actually vote against us in the districts we want to win." So in essence, gave themselves a partisan opportunity to proceed. I don't think I talk about it in here, but you know, a lot of us have heard a lot about partisan gerrymandering. There is no such thing as partisan gerrymandering anymore in the federal courts. It's not what they call nonjusticiable. You cannot bring a partisan gerrymandering claim in federal court as of about a year ago. There is still somewhat of a possible partisan gerrymandering claim in the state courts. I don't think that's something that I'm assuming is probably going to be your issue here, but that is a possible, no state courts ever, no Illinois courts ever found a partisan gerrymandering, but it's kind of an open issue. However, you have what we call traditional redistricting principles, besides those that are in the statutory guidelines. You have to comply with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. I think Assistant State's Attorney Neearman has given some good examples of that in her previous PowerPoints. But in essence, what it really means is you cannot try and abridge the rights of a minority to elect a candidate of their choice. So what you can't do, in essence, and it's a lot more complicated, but pack or crack is kind of the thing. You can't put 90% African Americans in one district and 20% in the neighboring district so that they can only elect one, when if you put them together, they could elect two. That would be called packing the one district. Cracking is where you would have, and it's easy, it's an easier example for African Americans, so I'll use that. I know that's not as big an issue here as Latino population, but it is, it's an easier math problem, I guess I should say. You can't draw a bunch of 48% districts or 45% districts of African Americans or any minority in an effort to make sure they cannot elect a candidate of their choice. So where possible, the goal is to elect, allow African Americans and Latinos in particular an opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. Other traditional redistricting principles are preservation of counties, other political subdivisions, such as school districts, townships, mosquito abatement districts, if you wish, preservation of communities of interest. That's the one that is kind of very amorphous, that concept, but it's really a group of individuals united by shared interests or values, such as shared racial, ethnic background, common history, culture, economic ties, transportation patterns, communication networks. It is very much, there's no hard and fast rule in communities of interest. It's used, it's not used. People use it for what they want, but there is no real set standard that anybody, any court's ever really found. Other traditional redistricting principles, preservation of cores of prior district. I think one of the things we're going to recommend you do is start with your current districts, especially since you're at 24, and staying at 24, to the extent we can. One of the things we're going to suggest you do is keep those cores of those prior districts and not start over from scratch. We're not recommending that by any stretch of the imagination. And then the last one, which is permissible, is to avoid pairing of incumbents. That's a decision you all are going to have to make, but that is not a, you can avoid that if that's how you wish to draw. You can avoid, you can avoid, if you wish, to not pair incumbents when you draw your maps. You can take that into account. So there's nothing that says, "I can't take Member Smith and Member Jones, and even though they live next to each other or near each other, split the district some way in that spot so that we're protecting the incumbents having an opportunity to at least run in a district of their own." That's honestly a decision to be made by this board, not us, but that is something that you can take into account. Yes, Mr.? If it's okay to the Chair, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's totally fine.
I'm just, I don't understand it.
Okay. So the point is, here, and I have been a proponent for the last 20 years of drawing districts from a ethical or from a governmental standpoint. I have been a proponent of changing the law for the last 20 years to say, "You should not draw based on race, and you should not draw, or you should not draw based on incumbency, and you should not draw based on politics." You should draw blind, in essence, in those two parts. The law is not that way, though. You can draw, one of the things we will do when we, and I'm sure Joe Cena, Marita, whoever will draw, is we will put, we'll geocode everybody's address on there, if you wish, to make sure that we're not pairing for incumbents because they all happen to live in Aurora.
That's my, there's where, what do we, how do we pair incumbents?
Okay.
In a one-member-per-district--
So, yeah, and I'm sorry, I was not very clear. So-- So, yeah, and I'm sorry, I was not very clear. So, if you had, take Aurora, you got a lot of members in a small area, because it's a lot of people there, but, you know, they all, a lot of people live in that same area. If I could draw a district, one of the things you could do is you could draw a district with four of you together. So, you'd have to be running against each other or move.
Okay.
The goal is, I think the goal would not be not do that.
I might have been the only person who had that question, so I understand it if everybody else.
Okay. And I wasn't very clear, I have no doubt.
Thank you.
The next slide's kind of interesting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's just step back from that. Your recommendation is that we assure that that does not happen, but it would be the recommendation from the board to you that that does not occur. Because if you do happen to take a look at, I don't know if everybody can see it, it's at the bottom of Aurora, some of you may live, board members in Aurora may live within a half mile or a mile of each other, and that could easily impact as we start reviewing the map, that that may indeed occur. My question to you is that, is there a statute that says that the county board member has to live in that district or has to move into that district at a certain timeframe, a year, six months?
You know, currently, I believe you have to live in it when you run. I don't, I can look that up for you. I know the state's weird, the state's different, the state, you have time to move. I've never seen, I don't believe the county is such that you can.
Mr. Sheprow, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was about to say, there is a provision for the legislature, as I understand, that says that if you live in, if you don't live in the new district, if you live in an adjacent district or move, but I am not aware of any provision that says anything about county board members except that they must be resident. I do not believe, though, that there is a durational requirement the way there is, for example, for township.
Yeah, I, I think the statute is silent on it, and I haven't looked at the Electoral Board, but you're absolutely correct. The legislature, if you live in any part of a district, or if you live in, if you overlap with any part of a district, you can run in it. So, but you have, you have to move into the district after you win. I think it's 18 months. But, that does not apply to the counties.
That does not apply to the county?
No.
So, that if hypothetically, if a redrawing of a district would occur, and a current board member is currently residing in that, but the remapping shows that they would no longer, they could continue to serve and to run in the district they once represented?
No.
No.
No, just the opposite.
Correct. They would have to, either have to run in the district that they've been drawn into, or move.
Okay. All right, so that'll be a recommendation that we take a look at from this board.
Yeah, I mean, this, these are policy decisions that you need to make. If you want my recommendation is, you want to vote, if you can, with 24 to 0, and you, you know, if you want that, you take that into account. If you don't want that, you don't. I mean, that's really the reality of the situation. I mean, our goal is to get, you know, as close to unanimous as possible, I think would be the goal, but I, that's more of a policy decision than is mine as a lawyer.
Thank you.
Okay. In front of you, you have King County population estimates, and I just got this information a couple days ago, and I found it interesting. And, you're going to see in here that, so you have on the far left column, annual estimates, county. That's the Census Bureau estimates for population. They do that by counties, and I think they also do it by cities and states on an annual basis. The 2019 is the most current we have because 2020, as you know, is not out yet, which we call the PL data or the public law data. So, 2019 is at 532, 403. That's the population of King County, according to the Census Bureau. It's also confirmed by the one-year ACS or one-year American Community Survey. Interestingly enough, the five-year ACS, which is the rolling estimate, and we'll talk more about that in a minute, is 531,376. Why is that important? I think it gives you a pretty good handle on what your population numbers are because they're consistent. So, really, you have a 42-person, if you did 24 districts, which you have, you have a 42-person difference between those two estimates. So, as you'll hear from me in a little bit, it's important because of the ACS issues, you know, to try and draw, if you draw with ACS, to as close to 0 as possible deviation. So, you know, we would probably suggest, if you do draw, that your target be that midpoint of 22,162. And we'll talk about what you're going to draw with, et cetera, in a minute. But, that, that's kind of what I would say is your target, given the information we have today. Okay. Data, right into it. As we talked about, and as you all know, there is no, the 2020, April 1 decennial census is not out. We just heard last week what the apportionment numbers are, so what we now know is the total number of people under that census for the state of Illinois and every other state in the Union. The, so that, that's not out. We'll talk about when that is. What we do have is the ACS or American Community Survey data for 2019, based on a five-year estimate. Your statute, as we showed earlier, and I could show it to you, says, it's got, your, your numbers should be based on the last federal decennial census, which we don't have, or the most recent, because that was April 1, 2020. So, the, there's, you, there's a real question or concern to whether that data would meet the Illinois statutory guidelines. Next, we have the reapportionment data came out April 26. That's the total population for the state, but not broken down into counties, blocks, block group, et cetera, tract levels, and we'll talk about those in a minute. You're, this is kind of your schedule. The county board has authority to pass the map right now until the first regularly scheduled meeting in July, which as of right now is July 13. The public law data, or PL data, it's got a couple numbers after, it's like PL 94 something. That, we're expecting to be released mid to late August. You may have heard that the census is going to release data September 30, and that's the next bullet point. They are, but they're actually releasing what they call the legacy data. We expect to be, we've been told will be released in August, probably mid to late August. Legacy data is what we have historically used to draw with. Historically, we get that number, that data, February, and then the census kind of does what they do, and then they put it on their website in a different format for ease of use for the public. That's the September 30, 2021 date you see on the screen, and that you've heard a lot of. Every expert I've talked to, demographer, et cetera, is saying, what we've drawn with in the past is this legacy data, and that's all, that's what you need to really hone down to the block level. Under the statute, if you're not able to draw a map by, in this case, July 13, there's a county apportionment commission, which has an obligation to file the map by October 1. Who's on the county apportionment commission? State's attorney, the chair of both parties, the clerk, and the attorney general, or their representatives. So, those are your five. If they're not able to draw, then you get like, you know, then it's at large, which I don't think any of us want to see. But, right now, under the current statutory scheme, the county has, someone has the ability to draw a map up to October 1, 2021. And that date will become important in a couple minutes. Data options. What can you use? There's the, there's a current, single-year 2019 ACS data. That's a snapshot in time for 2019. I think the numbers are, talking about, I mean, I think the numbers, that's like, one out of every 3.5 mil, or that's 3.5 million households out of the country. So, it's a real small sample size. We'll talk about, the ACS 2019 five-year estimate data is a rolling average. That is, it's a five-year estimate. It starts, the ones we have start in 2015. They do 2016, 17, 18, and 19. And the midpoint of that data is 2017. So, you kind of have a midpoint that's three years ago, or three years before your April 1, 2020 data. The third option is to use what's called, what I call enhanced ACS data from a third-party provider such as Esri. Esri is someone that you have, I think, contracted with. They give you a lot of your data that you currently use. And, the concern with that is, no one really knows what they do. They use a lot of their own private data and roll it in, and if you had to go to court to justify it, I'm not sure that you would know, have the information, or your experts would have the information to say, "This is how they got there." Fourth way, find a draw, way to draw with PL data once released. What is the five-year 2019 ACS data? Real quick, nationwide survey designed to provide communities with reliably and timely social, economic, housing, and demographic data every year. The purpose of the five-year ACS census is to really know what's your demographics, not what your total population is. It was never meant to be your total population. So, when I say demographics, what's the age in your, what's the age in a particular block or block, block group? What's the Hispanic population? What's the African American population? What's the minority population of any minority? It's, it's an estimate of that. That's what it's meant for. Now, we are hearing about some people trying to use it going forward for this year, because they think that's, that's the closest that we have. If you said to me, "Phil, we want to draw before July 13, and we want to pass a map," I would tell you, this is probably your closest data that you can have. It comes with risks, and we'll talk about that. But, it's, as I said earlier, it's a five-year rolling estimate. It's not a single point in time, and its midpoint is 2017.
Phil, do they wait the rolling?
They do. They do wait it, Mr. Sheprow.
Sorry, Sheprow.
Here's the concerns with using the five-year ACS data. The sampling error, it's a survey based on a sample, a very, it's 1%, I think, each year is 1% of the households approximately. They have a degree of uncertainty associated with them. I'll show you that in a minute. When you draw, you really want to draw to get the best possible population numbers, as well as the best minority numbers. You want to draw what we call the block level. That's approximately 400 people. That, then it goes, block level's the smallest, then block group, which is approximately 10 or 12 of those, and then tract is above that. So, the larger up you go, the more you have, you don't really know, you can't, you can't draw, you're guessing. Okay? Now, we have experts that, what we call disaggregate that data, re-aggregate it into the blocks that have been drawn previously by the ACS. The problem is that they're, having tried to figure out how to do this, everybody's got a slightly different way of how to do it, and there's no guarantee. Some of the data you will see, when you aggregate and disaggregate and aggregate, you might end up putting 300 people in a block that actually has no homes, because the block group is so big. So, there's a whole issue there of what we're doing. And, as I said, not, ACS data is not available at the block level. The experts publicly have warned against using ACS data for population totals, and most experts have said, "If you draw with ACS, expect to have to tweak your map and redo it," because you're going to have a real hard time doing two things. One, hitting your deviation to 10%, and two, your issue of minority population. If you're trying to draw a Latino district, you may not have exact numbers or close to exact numbers to know, "Have you put enough Latinos in that district to actually be effective?" So, those are the concerns. The other thing that it really does is it has a, it has a problem counting, the air rate is larger on small groups such as minority population areas. So, you got an area of 400 people, or 4,000, whatever it may be, the air rate gets bigger when you count, when you have subsets of that group. Don't ask me how to do the math, I'm just telling you what I know, what people, what the experts are telling me over the last six months. The next chart shows you, is actually from the Census Bureau. I think it's a very interesting one. If you look, there, on the left, you have the margin of error, and on the right, you have the percentage of total. Of the block groups, I think that's block group, yeah, it's a block group level, the margin of error, if you combine the top two numbers, under 10% is 2.3%. Of those total block groups have a margin of error of less than 10% according to the Census Bureau, when you deal with total population. Look at the bottom number. Margin of error greater than 50%. The percentage that has a margin of error greater than 50% is actually 3.3%. It's more than that within the 10%. But, in essence, according to the Census Bureau, 97% of the block groups have a margin of error when you deal with total population of over 10%, which makes it really hard to tell you that you're going to draw a dat, you're going to draw a map with ACS and be able to hit that 10% deviation.
Phil?
Yes, sir.
And Sheprow, I wondered if there was a extensive front-page story in the Tribune of Friday, April 23, by Rick Pearson. I wondered if you had seen that?
Yes, sir.
And if you had any thoughts about some of the minority groups and so forth that have weighed in, seemingly along the lines of what you've just been pointing out, are problems with the use of that data?
Yeah, the next slide, actually, I just put it up there. The next slide, and I just put it up there, and it's probably a little small to read, but I will tell you that those, there's about 40 groups on there, on that slide. It's almost like we talked, but at least I, especially the minority groups. You have Maldef, you have NAACP, you have Common Cause, heavy change Illinois, heavy good government groups. Those good government groups have all come out with a press release in the last 10 days. It was slightly after that article, but most of them had already come out publicly, issued a press release saying, "Do not draw with ACS data." Common Cause has come out and specifically said, "If you draw with ACS data, expect us to sue you." Now, I don't think they're going to, I don't know that that's going to go down to the county level, but from a statewide level, I think that's to be expected. Maldef, who is obviously a, you know, the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund, for those of you who don't know, is a, probably the number one, they're really a law firm. They do a bunch of stuff, but they're really historically a law firm to sue people who violate the United States, the Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, or Section 5, when it existed. They are very strong. I've been in, well, I've been in probably 20 Senate hearings in the last month and a half, and Maldef has testified that at least six or seven of them do not use ACS data. We don't feel our population is accounted for properly in it. You have to remember what the ACS data is, or how it comes about. You have a survey that you get at your house. It has 60 questions on it. It's probably 10 pages long or longer. A lot of people don't fill it out. It's unlike the census where it's one page, you fill it out. If you don't, some, an numerator comes to your house three or four times. If you still don't fill it out, they ask your neighbor how many people live in your house. It's a, there's a lot of follow-up. In Illinois, I think we spent over $30 million for the census, for census getting the vote out, so we were heavily counted. As you may have heard, there was a thought that we were going to lose two seats in Congress. We only lost one. Large part was because of that $30 million that was spent, and the follow-up on the census. States that did not spend a heavy amount on that have been seen to not come out as well on the census as those that did. So, it was a huge issue in Illinois trying to push that, especially in the minority communities. And, as you can see, the minorities and a lot of the good government groups throughout, I thought it would look bigger on there, I hate to tell you. They're not for this. And I can give you the full list if you want, but it's, it's a public press release. Then you have the issue of the case law. I won't go through it, but in essence, these are four cases of about, of numerous ones that say, in essence, ACS samples too few houses. that say, in essence, ACS samples too few households, provide reliable single-year estimates, greater margin of error. Their estimates, the Census Bureau cautions that ACS data are estimates and recommends that users turn to other census products for population counts, in essence, the PL data. Not intended to be used in redistricting, et cetera, et cetera. So obviously, there is a risk of drawing and relying on a map that is purely driven with ACS data. What is that risk? It's obviously a lawsuit. You have, as we talked about, you have a pop, you have an issue with equal population or a 14th Amendment claim. You have a possible Section 2 violation of the Voting Rights Act, and both of those, if you're sued and lose, come with them attorneys' fees for the plaintiff's lawyers. So it's not just, you got to redraw your map, or someone's going to draw it for you. It is, there is a real financial risk if you're found to have violated either one of these. And I have to admit that I've actually been granted attorney's fees in these kinds of cases in other places. So what are your options? Right? One option is to use the five-year estimate. Second option, ask the legislature to extend the time for filing a map. There are a number of places who have asked the legislature to do that. I know Brian can talk about that as well, if you need be. No one has gotten a lot of traction, at least publicly so far. I've been in hearings where people have asked Senate Redistricting Committee to move the date because of the counties, and there hasn't been a lot of response. There's no real active bill right now that I can tell you is going to go through. However, and the upside is, you will probably know on May 31st, by May 31st, because I would, while the legislature can pass anything they want till the end of June, it then requires a supermajority, and you've got vacations, and they're pretty much gone on May 31st. So your other option, do you go secretly from courts? California and Oregon, as a state, have already obtained this relief for their legislative maps. Michigan filed about three or four weeks ago, they're waiting for a court ruling. What's the theory? The theory is, as a public body, or that you're not at, you cannot be asked to do something that's impossible. And you have these two different guidelines. You've got a thing that says, use the federal decennial census, you have this problem of what you're drawing when you have an ACS data, and then, you know, so it becomes an issue of, well, we have, we're between a rock and a hard place either way. What are the concerns for extending the deadline of a map? And there's, there may be more, but these are the three that I am aware of and have been told, talked to people about. One is, if you came back in, here, one of the options is going to court, and we'll talk about it in a second, and asking that the, the court allow you till, let's say, September 15th, the end of September, October 1st, since there's already that time built into the process, to allow you to pass a map through that date. And that way, you can use the PL data, you're not guessing, and you have a better handle on everything. Problem, candidate's petitions can be circulated starting about August 31st. I don't, that may be off a day or two, but that's approximate. And now, you're not passing a map till September, or late September. What do you do? Guy thinks he's in one district, a man or woman thinks he's in one district, ends up being in another district, he's got 100 signatures, and now you're going to tell him they're no good. Who knows? Two, candidate confusion over which districts they want to run in. Now, a guy, or a man or woman, excuse me, I kind of use guy colloquially, it's everybody. But someone comes in and says, well, I, you know, I usually have 90 days at least, or 120, to know if I want to run in something, or to get my petitions in, et cetera. Now I don't. I'm really down to 60 or 75 days, whatever it may be. That's another concern. Third is, we've talked preliminarily with the clerk, and I, you know, I'm not going to speak for the clerk, of their timing issues. It definitely is going to shorten some of their, it's going to be, create a lot of urgency in their office, I'm not going to deny that. But the reality of it is that, if God forbid, you were unable to pass a map and the County Apportement Commission came in, he's going, they're still going to have that same problem because October 1st is, that date's still sitting out there. So I don't think anybody, and I know I've talked to the state's attorney, she wants nothing to do with being on this commission. I'm sure me, the clerk probably has the same feeling. But, so what about a possible lawsuit? Who would be brought by, it would be brought by the county board, in my opinion, and others, maybe the clerk. Theory is, we talked about, impossible to meet. You would ask for an extension of the deadline until October 1st, maybe slightly earlier. I think that one of the problems, obviously, we talked about with circulating signatures, you provide signature relief to candidates. So any signature obtained in either of the two districts, the one they lived in before, or the one they're in now, you would ask the court to give them that relief, so they're not prejudiced in that regard. I think the courts have been pretty consistent to the extent they, they, you know, ballot opportunity is important. Obviously, those, we just saw recently that, again, that those limits, the number, the number of signatures or the minimum number of signatures are strictly enforced. But I think in this instance, you could probably get a court to say, hey, for this one time, we're going to allow you to get in from more than one district, one second before, which is kind of akin to one of the statutory relief that's been asked for in one of the bills was, hey, let people run in either district, and let them move, and two, let them get signatures from either district. And I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ken Sheprow, I was going to say, first, compared to other offices, the signature requirements for county board members, I think in every instance, are almost laughingly small. In some cases, like 40. But I, I take your point about where are they from. But it seems to me that you didn't list, or maybe I'm not seeing it, is that none of this works unless you take care of other issues. It seems to me that you would have to have a comprehensive approach in which you said, not only are we going to extend the deadlines, but we are going to extend the date for the primary and the circulation period. If, if you don't get, seems to me, a comprehensive package, everybody still faces some aspect of the dilemmas that you've already very eloquently laid out. And, you know, I, not exactly on point, but Judge Paul Meyer's decision with respect to the minority parties seems to give at least some indication that the court is willing to change at least some dates. Now, that didn't involve the primary because it was already done. But I, I just wonder if it's possible to get meaningful partial relief. It doesn't do, as you point out, it doesn't do any good to extend our deadline if we still have to file petitions by November 30th. Doesn't help the clerk, I would presume, if he's presented with information late in the game, and yet has to be prepared for not only petitions, but for a primary, which I believe is still the earliest in the, in the country for a non-presidential year. So I just wonder if you could
Yeah.
...speak to that.
Thought about it a lot. I will tell you two things. One, it's very clear to me that, now, it's not to your question, please, and I'll get to it, but it's very clear to me that the legislature is never going to move this primary. Not going to happen.
That is actually my unspoken question, so you are answering it.
I have sat through these hearings where people have asked them to move it. I've, the first county code revision that, I don't know if it was a Saco, I don't know them, but the county name, you know, the groups' names that run, that represent the counties. Their first suggestion was push everything back 60 days, including the primary, and that was dead on arrival in the legislature. For whatever reason, the majority party wants nothing to do with that. I can tell you that, there's just no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So given that, now you're looking at trying to get relief, and, and my suggest, you know, my personal suggestion is, you're, if you ju, if you try and move a primary, now you've got a bunch of other people, you got, are you doing it for Kane County, you're doing it for every county, and you're going to get a lot of kickback of the majority party in Springfield saying, no chance, and heck, are we going to let that happen? They're going to come in and fight you. If you limit your relief, and I understand it's got problems, don't get me wrong, I mean, we're not, it's a rock and a hard place, but I think it's a lesser of a hard place, to just kicking back the date of the map, still starting the signatures, and that's why I kind of talked about, you could do it in two different districts, you could get the signatures, as you mentioned, signatures for county, not huge numbers for the most part. Sorry, I know I keep getting away from the mic, I apologize. So there are different ways to try and skin this cat. I think this, the easiest one is to be more narrow, as long as, you know, we can work through some of the issues, and I know the clerk's looking at them, that the clerk can get it done. They have third-party vendors, yes, they have to, you know, I, I know historically, they hand out packets for people as to what district, tells them what number, how many you're going to need. That is not, I don't believe, a statutory responsibility, it's one they undertake out of goodwill and trying to be helpful. But if the clerk gives you a wrong number, you're still stuck, right? If the clerk tells you it's 40, and you got, and it ended up being 45, and you filed 42, you still lose. So yes, I know the clerk wants to help, that's wonderful, and I think all the county clerks do pretty much the same thing, I'm sure yours does as well. But I don't think that it is a, I, I think it's the lesser of two evils personally, to try and just get that one date moved, try and give some relief on signature and candidates. But, you know, it, it's a slight legal, it's a slight policy decision. I also think it has a little better chance of success if, if you can get the clerk to approve, to sign off, as well as the entire county board.
So if I may, Mr. Sheprow. Who's that, Mr. Kope?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Kope, if, yes, I'll, I'll take your question in just a second, but I don't want to get too far ahead of our agenda. And if we can, Mr. Kope, I'll take your question, but I'd like to go back to discussing the use of the ACS data, because we can't do anything without at least getting your consensus on this, because we have to use some data to use to draw a preliminary map. But, Mr. Kope?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. My question is, it's probably pertinent to the ACS data, in the event that we use the ACS data and we get sued, what is the end gain for the plaintiff if we are sued? Is it a monetary thing?
It is a redraw, it would, it would be, one of two reliefs that would be asked for, actually, three, but one of two for sure would be asked for, would be to either have the court, ask the court to draw your map, or have the plaintiff and the defendant, the plaintiff present its own map and ask that it be approved, or send it back to you to draw. The downside is, now you're in a completely, now you're in a really bad situation because you're still trying to draw after July, after September 1st, let's say, because now you know the data, you know you're wrong or right. And you're still drawing in September and causing some of these same problems. The third, the third problem, I see, the third concern, the other concern is, there's an attorney fee provision.
Is it a negligible risk?
No, I don't believe it is.
Thank you.
The other thing, and I should have probably said this, if you proceed to try the court route, two things, you would probably file shortly before May 31st, or sometime before the legislature recesses. You wouldn't try and get in front of a judge until that first week in June. And, you know, you would wait as long as possible before doing that and get a handle on what the legislature's going to do, and then file first week in June to get you as much time as possible. However, that being said, and this goes back to the chair's issue of ACS data, and I kind of got through there a long way, and I apologize. My recommendation is, you draw between now and July 13th, you start working on ACS data, try and draw the best map you can, and so that you're protecting yourselves. I'm not going to suggest you don't do anything. You draw, we help you draw, we help you try and get the best map that we think is successful. You also have other people helping you, and we keep going down that road because you may not have a choice. And that's the concern, is you don't have a choice. So you need to be ready, you need to be protected. And honestly, if you draw, if you're forced to draw with ACS data, or you decide to draw with ACS data, my recommendation would be, as soon as the data comes out, we put the new numbers into your shapefile of your map and see how we did. If we did poorly, or missed on certain areas, you know, we would come back here and try and draw a new map. Now, there is a question whether you have the ability to draw a new map after July 13th. I don't know, no one knows, that's not been decided. What we do know is that mid-decade, you can't draw, there's, at least at the state level.
Mr. Sheprow.
Well, okay, that, a number of things then occur. One is, is that I believe that at one of our, or more of our previous meetings, was suggested by our staff and possibly by the clerk's office as well, that even once we get the actual census data in, let's say, September, I think we were told that possibly end of October, early November, might be the earliest that we would be able to break that down into the usable block data that would be necessary to do a lot of this work. And so that, and, and if it turns out that the data would show even close to the numbers you put up earlier, it seems to me that that might involve a lot more than just a tweak to, you know, a couple of things along the edge. I think I have this right, but you'll know better than I. My recollection that in North Carolina, in 2018, there was a federal lawsuit with respect to the apportionment of the congressional seats. And I believe that the federal court said, yep, you're right, we're not going to draw the map, and we don't have time to do it before the election. So their order, I think, was that the 2018 congressional election in North Carolina took place in the existing districts, which had been declared to be unconstitutional, with an order that they would be then redrawn for the 2020 election, and that was in fact what happened.
Let me take those in order?
Yeah, or any order that makes more sense than the way I put it.
I'll try and
And again, this is Sheprow commenting.
I'll try and go in the order that I think you asked them in, but my memory gets bad too. So I know, I, I heard that, I think, the first task force meeting, about the conversion of the data taking a number of weeks, if not months. We are, historically, we have been able to do that in less than seven days. In fact, closer to two or three. Because we're set up in such a way that you can just download this into our system because we already have it, it's everything's set up in the system. The data, it's just an act, and, you know, it's an, we have Autobound, people use MapTitude, people use Esri, but what we're, my experts are telling me, and my data guys is that, who have done this for the past 20 years or so, that they can do this in two to three days. So I think seven's pretty comfortable. As far as tweaks, you're absolutely right. I don't know that it's going to be tweaks, it may be wholesale, I'm hoping it would only be tweaks, but I can't promise you anything one way or another. All we can promise is that we will do our best, and that hopefully, all we have is some tweaks around the edges, the equal population. The bigger problem could be, is if we have tweaks in the Section 2 districts, Section 2 areas, especially Aurora in particular, because you have a lot of complications in Aurora, right? You have, you have the possibility of having, and I haven't looked at the data per se on the, the heat maps, but you know, you have the possibility of having up to nine minority-majority districts in this county. I don't know if you can draw nine, but just by looking at population I don't know if you can draw nine, but just by looking at population where they are in my head, it's somewhere between six and nine you can draw.
Shepper, again, we had a discussion about population when the CARES Act committee had to make decisions about allocation of funding. And at that time, it was clear that the municipal authorities in Aurora, and Elgin in particular, disputed the estimates and believed that they could be off by tens of thousands of population votes. Would obviously, would have affected not only our distribution of funds, but if carried over to the redistricting, that's obviously a big number if the average size of a district is going to be 21,000 or 22,000. Is there any case law that you're aware of where anybody has successfully challenged the actual enumeration count in any way?
No. No one has been successful in, you know, to my knowledge, and I know there's been people who have tried of saying, you know, you can't use the census, you have to enhance the P.L. data, you have to enhance that somehow. No. In fact, people who've tried to draw with C-VAP, or based on citizens voting age population using ACS, the courts have said, no, that's not what you should be drawing with. The census data is the census data, and especially for the county level, when we look at your slide, the slide earlier about your definition of population is defined, number of inhabitants is determined by the last preceding federal decennial census. So if we get that number, you're pretty safe, almost bulletproof on the population number, if we get that number.
Mr. Martin.
And I don't remember your third question, so I apologize.
The, it seems to me that our way forward is pretty clear. It's use the ACS to get as far as we can, file a lawsuit with hopes that we buy an appropriate amount of time to enable us to comply with the statute, which says we have to comply with the census. Isn't that, don't we do both things and move ahead? I mean, we don't have, we don't have eight different choices, and we can, and there's problems with all of them.
That, yes, that is my recommendation.
So, I mean, we just, don't we just do it? I mean, we can sit and talk about it, and all that we, and I'm not saying we shouldn't discuss it, but all we do is just continue to raise concerns with the only route that we have to follow, which is to do the best we can to begin the process, and then hopefully have a court order which in some way enables us to properly comply with statute. And if we have a problem later on because of what we chose, it didn't matter, because we didn't have a choice anyway.
Yeah, it's a pretty defensible position to say, hey, if the court doesn't allow us to use the wait, we did the best we could, right? I mean, but you've taken every step. You've, we've seen that courts have allowed this, we've seen Oregon allow it, we've seen California allow these extensions. Those were more wholesale extensions, don't get me wrong, but, and they were also, here's the problem. Illinois is one of, I think, seven states, or five to seven states, that draw in such a short timeframe after the census. Usually, it's not a problem. We get the stuff in February, I'm drawing maps by March 1st. But not every state has this problem. I really, so you don't have, you say to me, oh, three states have done it. Well, three out of five or seven, it's not. Oklahoma has a different setup. They can use whatever data they decide. They've used, decided to go with ACS data. They have backup issues in their state constitution.
But to my point.
No, you're right.
We don't have a choice. So why don't we just say we're going to start the process, let's get the lawsuit on file as soon as we can, let's begin using the ACS data, which will take us as far as we reasonably can, and then hopefully get a court order that enables us to legitimize, either legitimize what we've done, or to change what we've done to conform to the reality of the census, which we hope to have done in time. But we don't have a choice. We can't do nothing.
No, we can't. My recommendation is right along those lines, sir.
Don't say right along those lines, just say, that's my hard and fast recommendation.
Recommendation, but. You kind of heard it, so I didn't want to say it again.
Should we bring, is there any other conversation? Because we've heard from three members of the board regarding the use of the ACS data. Yes, Ms. Wenicki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a thought, but when I look at the Kane County population estimates, and they're saying from 2010 to 2000, roughly 20, we only grew by 17,000 people. Now, I think it's more than 17,000 people west of Elgin. I think Elgin has exploded and has annexed so much property to the west. So even, I think, South Elgin, even Huntley, I think Pingree Grove has exploded. In 2010, we were kind of a sleepy little county, and now I think there's a large push, just as it was in DuPage County years ago, to move out here. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, we need something to guide us to at least get moving, so possibly the ACS is the way to go.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chairman, this is Debra Allen.
Yes, hold on just a second, please. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Bill Leonard. Phil, I think what Mr. Martin said, and what I'm kind of understanding, is basically, we should use the ACS data, file for relief in the courts, draw our maps, hope, and then hopefully only tweak.
Well, I think you're, yeah, to a certain extent, yes. I mean, the only caveat I would say to that is, if you get the relief from the court, you don't have to tweak, you just wait, and I can give you real data. But other than that, I agree with you, yes.
That is, that's what I'm hearing, the process as well.
True.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Welcome, Mr. Luca Hans. We're glad to have you on our side. My question is this, you suggested that we would start with the 24 districts that we currently have, and move from them, as opposed to trying to, you know, draw 24 districts from scratch. Do you have some confidence, have you had a chance to look at our 24 districts? And do you have some confidence that they were drawn fairly in 2011? Did we, were we pretty good about making sure our minorities were well-placed within those districts and so on? So if we start from them, and then start to massage them to fit new numbers, are we starting in a good place?
Let me, I have not gone through those numbers, because I don't know what your minority population is in each of those districts was at the time. I've seen your minority populations now. I do think that when I say tweak, you're not going to be able to tweak Aurora. Just not, can't be done, right? Your Latino population has grown so much in that area, that while it may have been perfect 20, 10 years ago, you've got places that are over, have, you know, I think.
About 90%.
Yeah, 80, 90% in some places, and next door to a 35% or 45% district, right?
And that is, if I may interject, historically, in 2010 in Aurora, there were some districts that were packed at 90%.
Yeah, and I don't know that, I'm not relaying that one way or another. I do know also, though, that the Latino, or that, you know, you have a migration of the African-American community out of Aurora, to a certain extent, I believe. You have an immigration into, or a migration into of the Latino community. I don't know what, I can tell you that you do have current districts that are at that 80% to 90% population level. I don't know what, I don't have the information as to what they were that day, you know, on April 1st, 2020, and when you drew it in 2011. I'm not going to, you know, we haven't, I actually kind of have the shapefiles, but I haven't looked at them. But there are areas that there's no way I'm going to, you're going to be able to tweak. There are, however, you will see that Aurora in particular is going to stay heavily Aurora, because the minority population is there. You're not, that district isn't going to go way out west. It can't, because that's where the heavy population is. So the way, the easiest way to draw, I mean, here, I could, we could send you to the map drawer and say, draw up 24 new districts and don't look at the old one. That's an, you could draw that in infinite number of ways, okay? I have an expert who's, who draws, there's experts out there who draw random maps, and they'll draw 6,000 maps, just randomly with a computer, in, you know, like a week. So that's, I mean, so you could, and they're all different.
That's why we have a demographer.
Yeah, but I mean, so, but, and I've worked with the demographer you have. She's drawn maps statewide, or especially Section 2 districts on the state level. You know, we've worked together 10 years ago pretty heavily. So it can be done, it's not going to, you know, I've kind of drawn the Northeast a little bit. Your, you know, that part is going to have to move, because you have significant population. You're going to have significant changes because of your growth in, is it the Rutland Township area? And I don't know their townships, but when you have the kind of growth it looks like you had in that, is it, I can't see that far now, District 9, or whatever it is, that far northwest, top northwest, and I can't see the numbers. Yeah, when you have, when you have, when you have a group, a district that is now approximately 30,000 people, you're going to have to move significant lines, especially as it relates to your rural areas. I mean, it's, that northern district is going to move some way, shape, or form down, you know, there's just going to be movement. How you do it, that's up to you, but there has to be, because you've got that kind of growth in one particular area. Just is what it is. Because I think your ideal population 10 years ago, and I'm just doing the math in my head, was about 21,000.
I think it was 21,500.
Yeah, so now you've got an additional 1,000 people you're putting in each, or 600 people you're putting in each one. So you're going to have changes, and it's not, it hasn't all been, you know, uniform, right? You've got districts, you've got places that have grown up. It's farm, it's agricultural. You've got places that you put homes in, and they're all together. So, yeah, when I say tweak, yeah, we're going to start with, the suggestion is, and we've talked to the demographer, start with what you have. I strongly suggest you start with the Section 2 districts, because those are the ones that get you in trouble. So you draw Northeast, you draw Southeast first, try and do the right thing in those areas, and then go from there.
So are there any other questions on this? I'd like to be able to get a consensus on the use of the American Community Survey data, and that would be specifically?
The 2015, 2019, five-year estimate?
The 2015, 2019, five-year estimate?
Yes, 2015 to 2019. Yes, ma'am.
Are there any nays for the use of this data pool, this data?
I think that if we're going to use it, it must be made unmistakably clear.
Oh, name, please?
Shepper, sorry. I need to have something in my head that tells me to do that. I think we need to make clear that we are doing so only because it is the only real available alternative, and that it is preliminary only, and make clear that we do not believe it is reliable data on which to make a final map. This is for the purpose of preliminary work only.
Well, you can't.
All right, Mr. Martin?
And I would put a comma after that, and say, and we are concurrently going to file a lawsuit.
Well, that'll be our next point. That'll be our next point on our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'd like to defer a consensus on this question till we've decided the lawsuit issue, which I think is also on the agenda. I think they're really inextricably tied up, as Mr. Martin has suggested.
Do, we don't need a motion on this, since this is just a consensus. I've heard, is that a nay to defer? Because we have to, we'll be voting on the, I seek direction from the board on how you'd like to proceed.
How many nays are there?
How many nays are there to use the American Community Survey 2015, 2019 rolling data?
Madam Chair Ford?
One nay?
No, but not a nay, it's just that we are making it clear that this is the first time we ever use this information to make the map. So the, for me, the part of doing what we're going to plan to do as far as the challenging the courts, actually is a part of us agreeing to use this information.
I would agree with Mr. Ford. Shepper?
I, I do believe that they are brought together, but without any consensus from this board, we will not have any data to draw a map.
Madam Chair Gumps?
Yes, Ms. Gumps.
I'm all for using the data that we have available to us. That, we got to start somewhere. We'll go to step two after we get to that point. It's my opinion.
So I'm not hearing any nays? So we have approval to move forward with the use of that data pool? Thank you.
Then I'm a nay. Shepper?
Nay.
I dislike, the previous board chairman was excellent at creating a consensus where there really wasn't one, and there were lots of unanswered questions. And I guess I just fear that if we say there's a consensus to move forward with this data, we are later going to be arguing what that consensus was. So I would support using it for the purposes I previously indicated, which are very limited, and as a very preliminary work, because I agree that we shouldn't do nothing. But I don't want that to be interpreted as a consensus that we're going to use it at the end, or ask a court to let us use it.
Yes, Ms. Wenicki?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Is it possible, sorry, we could make this an agenda item, since we do meet at our full county board? We do meet a week from, actually, a week from today, and then we can put in the addition that Mr. Shepper was talking about?
We're, we're, we could. We are about to now talk about the next resolution to, or actually, discussion to develop the lawsuit. So they're pendent upon each other to the point, but that is the next item on our agenda, is to talk about the lawsuit.
Kope?
And if I may, and the state's attorney can correct me, I believe that even with the census data coming out, there's already threats of lawsuits for that as well.
Bates, please?
May I suggest a procedural compromise here? Let's, let's talk about the lawsuit, okay? And then at the end, propose a consensus that combines the two. We'll have had both of them, and then, and then I think that addresses Mr. Shepper's concerns, which I think are properly registered, and it keeps our agenda in order. So if we, if we now discuss the lawsuit, and then we ask for one consensus at the end, which in my paraphrase would be that we use the 2015, 2019 ACS five-year data, and concurrent the earliest possible time, file a lawsuit that would enable us to obtain legal, proper census data preparatory, or as a precondition to the final redistricting, which is, I think, what we're talking about. I'm not trying to take a position so much as to repeat what I think we've agreed on.
Shepper likes Mr. Martin's suggestion.
Mr. Shepper likes Mr. Martin's suggestion.
Bates, please?
Ms. Gumps? Oh, yes, Ms. Bates, you have not yet spoken.
Yes, I have a question. If we start with the ACS data, then when we do get the census data, will we quickly switch over, or will we, is this? we quickly switch over, or will we, is this changing horses in midstream, or what would we do when we get the final, the true census data?
Um, I believe that it was called a tweak.
Yes, tweak.
That's a technical term.
Okay, okay. Technical tweaking, okay.
A scientific tweak.
Thank you.
We do believe in the science of tweaks.
I, I approve of this, Madam Chairman.
If, if I may, what we would do is, we would, you would have, we'd have shape files of what you're trying to do essentially, we would then download the new data on it, and make, and suggest changes based upon the new data, but to the districts that you have already looked at and recommended, and then we would make recommendations based on the new data that we would plug into the same map you have. I hope that answers the question.
Does that answer your question, Mrs. Bates?
Yes, thank you, I approve of this plan, Madam Chairman.
So, are there, would, to, trying to figure out how to say this, do we have a consensus to use the ACS 2015, 2019 rolling data, along with going forward for a potential lawsuit, potential lawsuit, we don't know, pending the outcome of the state legis, uh, legislators' meeting, I believe that ends on May 31st, to start moving forward with the drawing, the re, using that data, along with planning on having a lawsuit, to start drawing the redistricting maps?
Madam Chair Gums?
Yes, Ms. Gums.
I, I agree with that, um, our hands are tied so far behind our backs, and we're only one county, there's 101 other counties out here, and with all due respect to our state legislators, they're very aware of our position, and frankly, I'm a little disappointed that, that legislation has not been handled, so that we're not sitting in a room talking in circles about what we can and cannot do. We are bound by statute, and it has not been corrected, phone call after email after phone call, nothing's been done, so we have limited options, and we have to go forward with that until they fix it.
And, and I would like to thank you, Ms. Gums, for your perseverance in contacting our state legislatures. I have done the same, and the reaction has been, um, equal of, we will get to you. Uh, but there's been no response back, uh, of any substance, uh, ranging from state senators to our state representatives, uh, so it, it is an issue, but it's an issue that is being faced with all 102 counties.
Correct.
It's our problem.
So, um, are there, Mr. Sheprow, you have one more question?
I actually have a motion. I'd like to move to table the consensus you outlined until the end of the meeting today, after we have discussed the lawsuit more thoroughly.
Second.
Okay.
Berman?
Berman. So maybe we then move for, oh, um, we have the vote roll call, please. Okay, this is to move to table until, after the discussion of the lawsuit? After the discussion of the lawsuit. Uh, Allen?
Allen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, aye.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Kenyon?
Kenyon, yes.
Kias?
Kias, no.
Kope?
Kope, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Uh, Malina, are you back?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had some audio issues earlier, um, yes.
Okay, Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Sheprow?
Sheprow, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeis?
Sergeis, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, no.
And Winicki?
Yes.
It passes. So Phil, could you please come up and guide us about the lawsuit, please?
So, we're still working through, I mean, the details on what it would look like, but most likely, we're thinking about primarily a mandamus action, possibly injunctive and declaratory relief, seeking, um, my recommendation is seeking the extension of the deadline for the filing of the map.
Could you speak a little bit?
I'm sorry, is seeking an extension of the deadline for the filing of the map by this county board until approximately October 1st, 2021. I would, it would be beneficial, I believe, to have either all of the county board members as petitioners, or at least a unanimous vote from the county board, or something very close to it, to proceed, asking for the relief from the court. I think we should also seek, or advise, or actually, ask the court for the relief we talked about, which is if someone lived in a prior district, and that the signatures could be obtained both from his prior dis, his or her prior district and the new district, so that we're not disenfranchising anyone in that regard, uh, and that we would go forward with some kind of impossibility...
Who's gonna move?
Theory.
Who's gonna move?
How, how would you have us, how would you have us motion this?
Excuse me, why, why don't, um, let, let, let him finish, please, and then we can ask questions.
Um, I, I think that's the, the heart and soul, or the guts of what I'm recommending. The one thing I will admit that we're kind of working through, or, you know, we've talked about a lot in the last 24 hours, is who would be quote, a defendant in this case, uh, you know, he, whether that be a friendly defendant, whether that be a joint, in, in California, the defendant was also a petitioner, because the defendant had certain statutory and constitutional duties, but that defendant in that case, I think, was the Secretary of State, uh, was both a petitioner and a quote, named defendant, because you had to have someone on the other side. In Michigan, it's just an application to the court, there is no defendant, it's just an application. So, that's, we're kind of, I, I don't have those details, we've kind of tried to work through those in the last 24 hours, talking to, uh, the state's attorney's office and doing some research. So, those are, it's still an open question, obviously, we want to make it as, as easy as possible, so that there's no one out there objecting to this. I think that's your best chance, is if no one's objecting, uh, and go from there.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you explain what no one objecting means?
Yeah, I mean, here, you're gonna file a lawsuit, and there's gonna have to be some kind of notice made, one to the Attorney General, because you're asking that a statute be, uh, modified, or lack of a better word, or extended into something slightly different. You also have members of the commission, right, the backup commission, you have a clerk, you have the Attorney General, you have the state's attorney, well, obviously, the state's attorney is not going to be a, you know, not going to object if they're hiring me to do this. Um, you have the heads of both parties, who would probably be notified, who are also parts of the commission. You would try and at least notify those people that you can think of, and publicize it, so that, and I'm sure a judge would ask you to publicize it, so that anybody who wants to come in to object can at least be heard.
So I could be a plaintiff and a defendant, Sheprow?
We'll try and keep you out of the defendants issue, but yeah, I mean, conceptually, the goal is not, the, the goal is to avoid that, um, but our, but I think at least from a notice standpoint, we would want to notify some of these groups that we know are, uh, normally, you know, who have, who have a, um, who have standing or have an, you know, and it, have reason to be worried about the outcome of the election. So you got parties who are, were in the primaries, et cetera. So, you would really want to try and hope that no one comes in and object. I think everybody sees the problem, I think both parties see the problem, we have the chairman of one party here, um, and I know we have a number of members of the other party here as well, who are all, seem to be a consensus that we know we'd prefer not to use the ACS data or draw, you know, blind. So, I think we'd be, like in California, no one objected. Uh, same thing, I don't think anybody objected in Oregon, Michigan to date, no one has objected either, so.
Gums won't object.
Excuse me, we have Mr. Sergeis.
Madam Chair, again, I think that we, we find ourselves after two hours here in a room with everybody in concurrence, and I, yet, I don't know how to establish or verbalize this resolution to move it forward, um, yet, I believe that we all stand...
Mike, please?
Mike?
Can you hear me now?
Name, please?
Better.
Sergeis?
Thank you.
Um, so again, I, I believe we're all in concurrence on this, I just don't know how to verbalize this, or word this, to move it forward for us. Can anybody give us a hand on that?
I, I, I think what we're looking for is a motion to proceed with seeking an extension of the deadline for, uh, for the filing of a map by the county board.
I know, is it limited to that?
I have a motion to extend the deadline.
I, I've got... So moved, Sergeis.
This is, this is a formal motion rather than moving to consensus.
Gums will second.
We can't, we can't, we can't, because this isn't, it wasn't a, this wasn't...
It's a discussion.
This is a discussion.
Madam Chairman, I've got a proposed census that I drafted.
Could you, use your...
Before we get to that, could I ask the motion be read, uh, again?
We, we...
Is made?
We have, we have a...
We haven't added the questions yet, I have a question, please?
There's a motion on the floor. Sheprow?
Mr. Sheprow, I recognize that, could you please read the motion? Okay, the last motion made was by Sergeis, which was to, for the board to proceed with seeking an extension of a deadline for filing a map by the county board, and second by Gums.
And I would just ask, seeking an extension from the circuit court, and then the rest.
That answers one...
I, I kind of did it off the cuff, so I apologize.
No, could you read that again, please? Okay, by Sergeis, to proceed with seeking an extension, uh, by the circuit court of a deadline for filing a map by the county board, second by, second by Gums. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd like to hear what, Sheprow, I'd like to hear what Mr. Martin had in mind.
I'm, if, if, and I looked at the agenda again, and we talked about possible action approving a lawsuit, so I guess, procedurally, we can do it, I'm fine with the motion as it's, as it's been made.
Bates, please?
On the agenda.
Oh, we have, we have much discussion right now. Um, Ms. Bates?
Um, I would like to amend the motion to say till October 1st.
Oh, I, I didn't hear that.
I would like to amend the motion to say until Oc, seek extension until October 1st.
Like a friendly amendment? Okay, I can add it. Are there any concerns, are we in agreement with that, October 1st?
Get their approval.
Very friendly.
Get their approval for that.
Um, that would be... It's Sergeis. Mr. Sergeis, do we have your approval?
Absolutely.
And Gums is okay with that? And Ms. Gums are...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam Chairman? Kias?
Yes, Mr. Kias.
Does that include all, all of the necessary caveats that we need to have that, that it, we're going to file it, refer an extension to that date, is there anything else we need to add to that?
I, I think I have a handle on what, unless someone disagrees with what I've recommended, I think I have a handle on the relief, the other relief requested, which is the signature issue.
I don't think...
Kope, please?
Can you specify the signature?
Wait, hold, excuse me, don't, please, one at a time, please.
Sorry.
Uh, so, Mike?
You're gonna move the...
I do have a question, uh, regarding this, before we go forward with this, just for clarification, uh, and Mr. Founstuck, perhaps you can weigh in on this as well, please? What I'm hearing is that we are looking at filing a lawsuit, so that we can get the census data, develop a preliminary map of our best work that we can have, limit, with the data that we are given, to do a redistricting of 24 districts, using the ACS 2015, 2019 five-year rolling data. Petitions are gonna go out at the end of August, as, as appropriate, then, pending receipt of the census data, you've mentioned that there, you could put it together pretty quickly, so that it could go to GIS, as well as our demographer, to do the revision of the map, which will be ready and approved to October 1st. Is, is that what the lawsuit is going to allow us to do?
Well, yeah, it'll allow you to, here, the, the lawsuit will not say anything about ACS, I'm sorry, I was looking at something else, but it will talk about the ability to wait until the PL data comes out and file on October 1st.
And...
Or, to file a map by October 1st, sorry.
And none of our potential candidates, perhaps, there'll be 48 different candidates out of the 24 districts, will have relief, so that if there's any changes in their district boundary lines, if they have received signatures from a district that was drawn originally using the ACS data, and if that district boundary line changes, all of those signatures would be still recognized, and to be able to be used for their petitions to run for that office.
Correct, there is, and I have language, it's long, I could read it to you, but I have language that was proposed by, I think it's Asako, that I think is good language in that regard.
Okay. One more clarification, please. There would be then no delay in the...
I have a point of order.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I don't think that this is the way one does a lawsuit, is to keep saying, are we gonna do this, are we gonna do that?
Name, please?
I, I was just seeking clarification about what this lawsuit is gonna be on.
Well, is this all going into the motion?
No.
No, this is under discussion, we're in discussion, that we're under, under discussion. There is no delay in the actual... One, yes, Mr. Sheprow?
Um, I guess I'm old fashioned, if I'm gonna be a plaintiff in a lawsuit, or we're gonna be in a lawsuit, I, and I have nothing but admiration for our counsel's ability to do that, I would like to see that lawsuit, I'd like to see the proposed complaint, uh, and we, we've already, just in a few minutes here, said, well, wait a minute, we want to make sure it says this, we want to make sure it says that, uh, so I would like to move to table, uh, Mr. Sergeis's motion, uh, until, uh, the task force appointed, uh, has had an opportunity to consider the proposed complaint, and that it then be referred to the full board, uh, at its next regularly scheduled meeting, and that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Kope, second.
Mr. Kope, seconds.
And if I could be recognized, ma'am?
Uh, yes, Mr. Kope?
Motion to table is not debatable.
Not debatable, that's correct.
So, could you please call the roll? This is a motion to table?
With specifics.
Okay, motion, okay, move to table the, the above motion?
Actually, parliamentary, Sheprow, parliamentary point, it really is a motion to postpone to a definite time, and that is debatable.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion, whatever you guys want.
All right, we have, we have...
Well, I, it, it's, may I speak to that, please?
I, I think I need a parliamentarian. So, could we have, or...
What are we hoping to achieve at this point? Um, I'm sorry.
Okay, to Mr. Shepro's last point, if you could just repeat what, what you're attempting to do. I, I, I'm not sure that the task force truly has a role in determining, you know, the advisory body portion of it really has a role in determining whether the county brings a suit, but that's up to, to, to you. But was there a date certain that you wanted to?
Yes. Yes, the purpose of the motion was to have it first evaluated by, since it's part of the redistricting process, and that was the purpose for which the task force is created. Admittedly, it has no authoritative, authoritative decision-making process, but the essence of the, the intent of the motion was that I think the full board ought to see what the complaint covers and what it doesn't cover, and to that end, it was to postpone the consideration of the authorization to file the suit until the next county board meeting, which I believe is?
A week from today.
Week from today.
Okay, so.
So it's a motion to postpone to a date certain.
Okay, great. And then are you taking the task force portion out of that?
Well, I, I, for the purposes of this motion, I will take it out of that, although as part of the general discussion, I guess I would be interested in knowing why the task force meeting that was scheduled for this week has been canceled. But yes, my motion at this point is to postpone to a definite date, that being the regular county board meeting in May. And I'll ask if my seconder would concur in that revision.
That was Mr. Kopee.
Kopee confer, concurs, yes, sir, thank you.
So, so maybe please have a vote.
Okay, this is a motion to postpone.
Madam Chairman, this is Alan.
I, I don't believe, again, parliamentary procedure, please, now that.
I'm trying to think here.
It's a motion. We can discuss.
You can discuss?
Now discuss, thank you.
Okay, so, so to clarify.
It's a motion to postpone.
Motion you can discuss.
Not to table, this is a motion to postpone.
This is Alan, and the clarification I'm asking then is, Mr. Shepro, you're suggesting that the lawsuit be drawn up between now and next Tuesday, and maybe even a little sooner so that we can see it.
At least a draft, yes, Shepro.
A draft, and then we'll, and then we'll see it and vote on it on, on next Tuesday. That's your suggestion, that's your suggestion and what we're voting on. Thank you.
Are there any other?
Kopee, please.
Questions, Mr. Kopee?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A little water over the dam at this point, but originally the question was, and it may be pertinent to, to the, this current point of order, and that, in that if, if my suspicions are founded, then we may have to retract some of the, some of these current motions. But in any event, are there any other counties that are pursuing these, this line of thought, this train of thought to where they are going to sue? And if there is, is it, is it, is it a possibility or a feasibility to engage in class action suit?
Phil, could you speak to that, please?
I, I know there are other counties that have discussed it. I don't know of any counties who have decided to go forward yet. The, you, if you join a bunch of counties, now you also create some logistical problems, let's say. You know, at one time when I started, I thought DuPage would probably join with you. At this point, I'm not sure that's the case, not because I just don't think they've got there in a timely manner, and you are really talking about a very short timeframe. If you file, maybe people will join you, but you also have to worry about where are you filing and who's got jurisdiction if you bring in five counties. Are you now filing at the Illinois Supreme Court? Are you filing, you know, there's just a lot of logistical issues that would have to be worked out if you proceeded that way.
Understood. Thank you very much.
One.
Yes.
One parliamentary note I would comment on is, I believe in terms of.
This is Mrs. Nierman.
I apologize, Michelle Nierman. I believe the debate is supposed to be limited to whether or not postpone, not the other merits of the discussion. It's whether, it's the merits of postponement. So in, in, for example, postponing to the next regularly scheduled meeting would allow you to have time to get the complaint drafted, a draft proposed, and you would have time to look at it. So that would be the merits of postponing.
Thank you. So now that we know the merits of postponing, so that we may see a draft of the proposed.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, Alan again? Sorry. I, my question is, is that, is that physically feasible, Mr. Luke Hans? Is, will you be drafting this and can you get it done in time for us to look at it?
As long as you don't expect perfection by Tuesday, I'll have something to you. It may have holes that need to be filled in, it may have additional argument, but it will give you, I think, the nuts and bolts and it will give you the relief requested, which I think is probably what Mr. Shepro's most concerned about, is what relief we're requesting. It may not have all of, you know, the details, and it may be two-thirds of what might actually be filed, but we wouldn't change any of the relief from then to there, which I think probably satisfies what I think the board is looking for at this point, but I shouldn't speak for them.
Yes, Mr..
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Luke Hans, I hate to put more pressure on you, but could you get that together by Monday so we'd have 24 hours to review it before the county board meeting? I will do my absolute best. It will be tight, and hence why I said, if you see typos, if you see whatever, please forgive me, but, you know, it, it is a short timeframe. We will get you something though Monday. I will promise you by, maybe not by the end of business, but you'll get an email by sometime that evening at the latest. If that's acceptable. That's acceptable.
Okay, very good, thank you. So I believe now we can call the vote.
Okay, so this is, this is for the motion to postpone, correct, then?
To, um, let's, motion to postpone.
To the next board meeting.
The lawsuit, proposed lawsuit to April, I'm sorry, May 11th, 2021. A clarification, postpone and draft.
Postponed, receive a draft. All right. Alan?
Alan, aye, thank you.
Bates?
Bates, aye.
Berman?
Berman, no.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Fraz?
Fraz, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Kenyon?
Kenyon, yes.
Kias?
Kias, no.
Kopee?
Kopee, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Shepro?
Shepro, yes.
Silva?
Yes, Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Serge's?
Serge's, yes.
Tepe? Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
And Wonniki?
Yes.
That passes?
Okay, very good. Now I believe, let's circle back around, please, and we had a consensus that was pending the discussion on using, on having a lawsuit, that they were intertwined. May I get a consensus on using the American survey 2015, 2019?
2015.
Pulling five-year rolling average data.
We want it to be a speculative, you know.
We, we, with the understanding that this is not the census data.
I think I'd like to make a similar motion to postpone with the suggestion that a specific consensus be written out as to how this would fit in, because I do believe it is still interconnected with the lawsuit, so I would make that motion.
You know what?
Kopee, second.
Kenyon, you're going to have to repeat that because I was getting Mr. Tepe out the door. It was, Shepro, move to what?
All right, I'm moving to postpone further consideration of the use of the ACS data until the county board meeting on May 11th, so that it may be considered in conjunction with the proposed complaint.
Conjunction with the other. Or with the, with the other?
With the, with the other, with the lawsuit.
Okay. And Kopee second that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on this?
Bates, please?
Yes, Ms. Bates?
Um, I would like to go to not postpone this because I feel like our lawyer will need to at least know that our intention is to use the ACS data so that he can move forward with the wording on our lawsuit. So I would like to move forward with consensus that we should use the ACS. I think, I think that's the horse, and then the lawsuit is the cart. Got to put the horse before the cart.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor. You can, yes, everyone can vote. No, if I could make a comment, though, is that until we receive consensus from the board on what data you would like us to use, the task force and the support for the task force cannot do its work because we don't know what data we can use to move forward, so that we will be losing approximately one week's worth of work. I just want to share that with you, and that, that is of concern because we are obviously in a tight deadline to be able to get to you and through the task force an appropriate map that you can vote upon, and that would be by July 13th.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
So.
Madam Chair, Kopee?
Yes, Mr. Kopee?
I'm sorry for the delays. All due respect, and that is a very pertinent point, and you, you had any questions myself, but the, um, the essence of the delays, not the delays, the postponement is to establish the language. We all know that we're, you can almost anticipate 100% we're going to be using the ACS data, and we could possibly proceed under that assumption and begin some, some other lateral work. So I, I, I think Mr. Shepro's point and motion is, is valid, and I will maintain my second. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is there any other discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Shepro?
Well, one, the task force can't move ahead because its meeting was canceled and not rescheduled without explanation, and I am still hoping that we would get an explanation. And also at our last meeting, from the presentations by, uh, Mr. Farnestock and the people who have been designated to be the outside consultants, my understanding is that they have been moving forward and working with this data, and they don't need our approval to do that. They're already doing it apparently. So I don't know that, uh, and, and again, we're being asked to give a consensus based on a series of vague comments that are not all incorporated into a single document. So I, unless we are prepared to take a recess and somebody try to write that down, uh, I, I would maintain that the best approach is to put this off. I don't think it slows anything down. I think the staff has understood what people are saying, and whether we call it a consensus or a motion or anything else, I think everybody is in general agreement that they can certainly look at that data and come back to us with some ideas.
What I'm hearing is a consensus.
Alan?
Yes, Ms. Alan.
Can I ask Mr. Shepro to, um, to confirm then? I, Mr. Shepro, are you proposing to go ahead with the consensus today because everyone's already working, or do you want to get the language in place for Tuesday?
I'd like to get the language in place for Tuesday, but I'm not telling anybody on staff that they can't work on anything that they think they ought to be working on. I mean, that's micromanaging. But for the board to weigh in and say, we have a consensus, and we don't really know what that consensus is because we keep adding details to it, I think if we're going to do that, then I, I think it should be written down. And we all know what we're, what we're consensusing too.
May I ask, who is writing up the consensus? Is that Mr. Luke Hans, or is that you?
No, we had a consensus on the agenda that, and then we wanted to incorporate the use of the lawsuit into that language, and now we have a motion to postpone the, we have an actual motion and not a consensus on the lawsuit, which is tied to the use of the ACS, if I can say just the ACS data as an acronym. So they are implicably, as to quote Mr. Shepro, tied together. So he wants to defer the consensus on using the ACS formal data until we see the lawsuit, and that is my understanding of the request.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Hold on just a second, please, yes.
Fraz speaking. I, I did support the postponement of the lawsuit. It's a much more technical document, in my opinion, but it sure sounds like everybody's in agreement to use the ACS data, so I, I will not be supporting the postponement on this second issue.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Kias?
Well, I should follow Mr. Fraz every time, I guess. That was my point, is that I think that what Mr., not to put words in his mouth, Mr. Shepro is saying is we, they already understand what we want, so we're just confirming that we wish them to continue to use the ACS data as we go far, go further in our process here. So I will not support a postponement. I think we need to get at least part of this over with and understood.
Let's short circuit the process. Shepro, if I might, I would like to withdraw my motion and ask Mr. Kopee to withdraw his second. Instead, I would register that I do not join in the consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Kopee?
In lieu of no motion, I have no second. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, Bates?
Uh, yes, Ms. Bates?
Can we, can we parliamentary, through parliamentary procedure, have a roll call on a consensus?
It's not a consensus.
And it's not a consensus. It's not a consensus.
There's been an indication that consensus has not always been a true consensus in this board, and, well, if it's not, if it's against the rules, I, never mind. But it would be one way to give, give everybody a voice.
If I may, are there any, I'd like to call the consensus, because we have one more item we do need to discuss on the agenda. If there are any nays, could you please voice them now?
Shepro, nay.
Kopee, nay?
Kopee and Shepro are nays.
Anyone else?
This is the consensus.
This is for the consensus.
ACS data.
There is a consensus to use the ACS data. Thank you, everybody.
Kopee?
All righty, now.
I like bridges and roads.
Authoritative source Google defines consensus as a general agreement. So I think there is apparently a general agreement.
General agreement to use ACS data. Thank you. The ACS 2015, 2019. The ACS 2015-2019 rolling data. Estimated rolling data. Yes.
I'd like to, Kenyon, I'd like to point out that you just spent two hours of your lives, and you didn't get anywhere. You might as well put masks on and try and walk through the woods.
Hey, Mike, I'm wearing my mask at home.
Too many cooks trying to be in the kitchen. What Ken really doesn't want, he wants not to vote on something he can't see the words. He wants to know what the words are before he votes. And I think we all do.
And none of this discussion would happen if we didn't have a pandemic and we didn't have other, other things that happened, that we don't have the census data. This would not have been a discussion. But we do have one, one more item. May I have a motion and a second to discuss and potentially approve the resolution authoring a fiscal year 2021 budget adjustment to provide funding for the reapportionment committee?
Berman moves.
Bates moves.
Oh, God.
Second.
So Berman?
And Bates.
And Bates, okay.
All righty. I'm just getting it right now.
Discussion?
Yes, a discussion, please.
I'll defer to Mr. Leonard.
Yes, Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution, I believe stipulates, I don't have it in front of me, but I read it earlier, up to $5,000 for community meetings.
That's correct.
Not to exceed. Okay.
That is accurate. And it was suggested earlier today that we'll consider having potentially up to five of community meetings throughout the county. Is there any other questions? Mr. Kope?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So where would the town hall meetings be held?
They're going to be, I don't have the city yet, but they will be both on the northeast, the southeast areas, mid Tri-City area, in the Aurora area. I think that was four. And then one more.
Elburn.
Elburn.
West, Midwest.
Midwest, thank you.
Thank you. If I may make a suggestion?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. The Village of Huntley is within District 9, and it sounds like District 9 is going to be the biggest stakeholder in this process. And furthermore, District 9 has a huge retirement community of senior citizens, so it's demographically sensitive. And I was hoping that we could have a meeting, at least attempt to get a meeting at Del Webb. Thank you.
Oh, great suggestion. Thank you. Mr. Shepro?
Well, I have a couple of problems with the resolution. One is, the title at least states that it is authorizing a budget adjustment to provide funding for the reapportionment committee. Reapportionment committee has not really discussed these community meetings other than to hear Madam Chair's suggestion that there ought to be some. At the end of the last meeting, I believe, one of the members asked specifically, what, what's the agenda? What is going to be done at these community meetings? Is there going to be a map presented? I'm still puzzled as to exactly what they are designed to do. We certainly want community input, but what questions are we going to ask them to even do this? To get their input? So, and the second concern I have is that, as has been pointed out, normally, we work through the committee structure, and it seems to me that this ought to have gone to finance. And I would like to move that it be referred to finance.
I can ask.
It got approved in finance.
It was approved in finance.
Yes, it was. Okay, well, then, why, why is it brought up at a special meeting of the board rather than forwarded to the, you know, a special, the regular board meeting? I don't understand that.
Do you have full authorization to vote and to pass motions at this meeting? This is not a committee of the whole?
Correct. I mean, you certainly could have it. But my question still stands, then, as to what is it that these community meetings are going to accomplish? And again, if it's funding for the reapportionment committee, shouldn't the reapportionment committee be weighing in on what it is that's going to happen at these meetings?
Madam Chair, Gums?
Yes, who's that?
Gums.
Thank you, Ms. Gums.
Having attended a couple of the hearings for the state, is my understanding that the idea behind this is to have input from the community, and they can do written testimony. The resolution that we have in front of us would coordinate or have somebody coordinate the questions that would be asked. And as board members, we would be attending those. So I think those are your, your questions, perhaps, that, again, having attended those hearings for the state, that's pretty much sums it up.
Madam Chairman, Allen?
Yes, Ms. Allen?
May I suggest amending the title to say authorizing fiscal year 2021 budget adjustment to provide funding for town hall hearings?
If that's a motion, I'll second it. Shepro?
I'll move it, and then we can, and then we can discuss it.
Is there any discussion on that?
Fraz speaking.
Hold on just a second, please, Mr. Fraz.
Fraz speaking. Ms. Allen, I'm just thinking maybe on the end of that, it should be to hold public hearings related to reapportionment.
Fine. Or is it technically, is it reapportionment, which we've already done, which indicates the size of the board, or redistricting?
Redistricting.
The, Shepro, the public hearings that are provided for statute are very specifically, specific, and I believe they relate to a specific map. So it seems to me it's more a matter of, as was suggested by the motion, and I think by Madam Chairman, that this is to gather community input and feedback, and not a public hearing in the sense of a transportation proposal or even a ultimate map. I think that would better convey, this would better convey the intent of what's being done.
This is indeed about community input.
I was trying to steer the resolution towards the public input as opposed to sending the money to the reapportionment committee, which is a different entity or a different reason to do it. And I don't mind the language at all, as long as we're agreed on that. And it could go to exec.
It can go to what? To, I'm sorry, didn't it?
Exactly.
Presently, my understanding is that this would, this would obviate the need to go to exec or the county board on May 11th, if, if approved.
If it's approved today, that is, that is accurate. And I will once again say that until the money is allocated for use, no work can be done. So.
Madam Chairman, Bates, please?
Yes, Ms. Bates.
Is there, this is a question. Is there a significant difference between a hearing and a town hall? Do we, do we need to be?
Yes, there is.
So this, these will be town hall meetings, so maybe we should change the wording to town hall.
Could you please read what the, there is a motion on the table to change the title of it?
What I have is, it's a resolution authorizing fiscal year 2021 budget adjustment to provide funding for town hall meetings relating to redistricting.
That is correct. May we please have a vote on that?
It's by Allen, and seconded by Shepro. Oh, and I have, pardon me, but it mentions county board is to hold four town hall meetings, and you mentioned in discussion that there'd be five.
Could we?
Revise that to five?
I think we, we have to, we'd have to do another motion within that, or can we wrap that up into the same?
As I understand it, sorry, Shepro, question is that the sum allocated would cover whatever?
We could potentially say up to five town hall, up to five town hall meetings. Give some flexibility.
Up to five.
I don't know that that needs to be, this was a motion to amend the title.
The title, that is accurate.
I think, if I might suggest, is that I think the, the discussion of how many, if we think we need to have that level of detail, should be an amendment to the resolution itself. And if, that was Mrs. Allen's motion, but if she would accept a suggestion that we modify the motion to include also an amendment to the text of the resolution, that there would be up to five, is that your number?
Up to five.
Up to five of such meetings, then we'd only have to do one roll call.
Ms. Allen?
And that's fine, except I think, I think we're talking about six. Northeast, Midtowns, Southeast, Aurora, Western, the Western area, and then, and then Sun City.
So if, if I may, we could say at least four town hall meetings. At least four. At least four.
About as many as we can get.
No more than.
It's a margin of error for the.
So this amendment includes not only retitling the resolution, but putting in the words in front of four, at least four meetings.
At least four.
And that's all in one amendment? All right.
That's perfect with Allen.
This is my Kenyon dinnertime amendment.
Kope, please?
Mr. Kope, yes.
I'm sorry, if there's any consolation to this, Friday, Aurora just had a town hall in regards to this issue. So I don't know if it pertained to the county board district, per se, or how much of that, but, you know, it may be redundant. So you can make, perhaps, cut that one out. I don't know.
That was, I attended that one, and it was a completely different discussion. If it is the, that was just dealing with state issues, with state redistricting, not on the county level.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You can never add too much public input.
So we may.
Allen is fine, Allen is fine with the change to the title, as Celeste read it, and then up to four town hall meetings. And does Mr. Shepro second that as well?
Yes.
I thought it was at least.
At least four. At least four.
At least, correct.
The county board to hold at least four town hall meetings.
Oh, boy.
Perfect.
Of May and June. May we please call the vote?
Okay, for the vote. This is Celeste calling Allen.
Allen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, aye.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Fraz?
Yes.
Gums?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Kope?
Kope, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez? Mr. Sanchez?
Shepro?
Shepro, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Wunneke?
Yes.
That passes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Quick question for the recording secretary? Did, at one point, I recall, there appeared to be 24, 22 members present. Did that change?
It's 20, 20 right now. I didn't have Sanchez a vote, so I'm assuming he's not there.
I do not see.
Yeah, there's 20 right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Bates?
Do we have to vote on the original motion, which was mine, and somebody else's to pass this, and then the amendment?
I believe that would be, that's a very well-taken point. I think that is the next item.
That'll be the next item. So do I have a motion to approve?
There is a motion. Ms. Bates's motion, yes.
Could we have a vote to approve? And could you read the new title of the amendment?
Oh.
I mean, the resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay. It is authorizing fiscal year 2021 budget adjustment to provide funding for town hall meetings relating to redistricting with a text amendment to the second paragraph stating that the county, it's the desire of the county board to hold at least four town hall meetings.
Please call the roll.
Allen?
Allen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, aye.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fraz?
Yes.
Gums?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Kope?
Kope, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Martin?
Martin, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Sanchez, did you return? Shepro?
Present.
All right. Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Wunneke?
Yes.
That passes.
Passes, thank you. I see no need for an executive session. May I please have a motion to adjourn to May 11th, 2021?
It's only two and a half hours.
Mr. Berman, I'll have you as second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
We are, we are adjourned. I'll see you tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m.